I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
And just as an explanation, there's a few things that have been eliminated. One is the presentation of one of the proclamations. The other is the recognition of the Part 8 grant. We're gonna move both of those to the next meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
I made a motion.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Public comments. Individuals wishing to address the board are asked to provide their name and address for the record, and the time limit is three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to come forward? Does anybody like to come and speak?
Chief, would you like to give a statement?
Proud of him, way back.
He doesn't lack.
Taking command, I like it.
Thanks, Ace. I'll tell you that. It's Robert Ragland, he came to us a month ago because he actually lives in town and interested in giving more information about the T program. In addition to that, in the meantime, he's doing the assistance with our annual controls. Actually, he's doing good work over the last few months before he actually spoke. He can be our next candidate. I'm glad that this stuff, they will body stuff and talk to you.
How are you all doing this evening? My name is Robert Ragland, I'm 24 years old. I currently live in Benson at 603 Main Street. I've been here since February. So far, I've been here, I enjoy the town, I love it. Like the chief said before, I am looking for a life in law enforcement. I think that animal control can prepare me and give me some, somewhat of the experience to have me the utmost prepared for the BLAT in January. I plan to take on this position and perform it best in my abilities, and I hope you guys can, you know, give me a chance to improve myself to fill that position.
Thank you so much, and you're welcome.
Thank you.
Where are you from?
I'm originally, I was born in Fort Cross in Colorado. My dad was stationed here at Fort Bragg in 1994. We've been here ever since, so I've been, I lived between the Fayetteville and Rayford area, but I moved out here in February, so I've been here ever since February.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Is there any questions that you have about the written reports? I think all of them are still here.
Okay, Matt, the projects. Sir, for the sake of time this evening and all that we have to encounter, I'll entertain any questions that you have on beneficial projects that we have moving forward that are grant related. The only one I will draw your attention to, we're very thankful that Mr. Tim Robinson, Paul Allen have worked to get all of our 32 check valves in place in the event that we do have major storm waters again this weekend. The one level of protection that we have today that we did not have in 2016, that we need to thank the state for, was the assistance of putting in those 30-plus check valves which protect sanitary sewer from flowing back into businesses on the 301 corridor. Unfortunately, I'm afraid we may be testing those this week in a real-life scenario. But that's where we've moved forward. If there's any other questions about the projects, I'll be happy to answer them roughly.
We'll now go into our public hearing. We're gonna be looking at SUP 2018-02, and I'm gonna call on Bob Clark, the interim planning director from Infocus.
I'd like to ask the mayor, members of the board, the, in this case tonight, we have, I'd like to, that's an evidence right here in the course, and anyone, including myself, who receives the present evidence, will need to swear it. So if it's a pleasure of the board, I'd like to go ahead and have, take care of that.
Yes.
And I'll thank Mr. Javier, if you'd come forward. Anybody else wants to speak to the board concerning this case, please come forward.
Well, I thought you were gonna introduce the project, and then we'd call for public hearing.
Okay, is that, alright.
Okay.
Not quite familiar exactly how it's been handled here, so we'll move on. The case basically is a, as indicated, a special use permit, the, handed out tonight to you, with some augmented information that will be added into the records, is a summary of the findings, significant findings for the board to consider. This applicant seeks to, a new special use permit, to enable them to develop the solar farm as originally approved in 2016, which sunsets this Thursday, along with the storm occurring in, coincidence, I guess. The project basically has been submitted identically to the previous project of Deprue by the board. Planning board, this particular case is also in your, in the package, the package is provided by ESA Management Services. The application, or the applicant is actually Benson Solar Farm LLC. The site is a 32-acre tract of land at 280 Benson Hardy Road, and somebody may be familiar with that location. The applicant did hold a public information session, and may speak to that. The, this particular application, again, has a site plan that's attached, referred to, referenced. The latest date on that is as of August the 1st, 2018, and we'll refer to that in part, in part of the record. Property is surrounded by a RE20 residential, which property was rezoned as a I-2 special use district prior to the last, during the co-hearings, the last meeting in 2016. The, as far as staff comments, recommendations, the applicant's indicates this construction, in quoting, shall not, was not started yet due to Duke Energy still being in the midst of their study of the site, and they certainly want to have this period of time continued so they can conclude that and proceed with development. Standard permit issuance is for two years, so if the board approves this, then it'll be a two-year opportunity for them to get this project underway. The request, as far as any recommendation for conditions, are mirror those from the 2016 project, and the, those conditions are outlined in this particular document. Planning board did meet September 4th, and has recommended this project. The draft minutes that are in your package, refer, I just mentioned to you, are the draft minutes, they, of course, won't be approved until the next meeting, and where it refers to ESA recoverables, it will also reflect in the final minutes of the recommendation that also refer to Benson Solar Farm LLC as the property owner in development. Property owner is the same. The zoning is still in place, so tonight, the board will not be asked to take any action concerning the consistency with your comprehensive plan, that was taken care of with the rezoning two years ago.
Okay, Bob.
Do you have to address any questions?
Okay. Any questions, Bob? I'll now open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak for the, for the project, to come forward. State, yeah. State your name and address.
Xavier Latre, 749, Xavier, in Long Island, Australia. I'm required, Michael, you know, you're right, you're right.
Your solemn square, the, the word that you speak here is the truth, the whole truth, and none but the truth. Thank you.
Again, my name is Javier Latre, I represent ESA Renewables and Benson Solar. I was here a lifetime, two years ago. I, I did the site plan and the design, so I will keep it brief, taking into account how busy the day is. So, the site plan hasn't changed at all. We submitted the same site plan that was submitted two years ago. It has the same characteristics that it had. If you guys have any question, I will be more than happy to answer them, just to brief you this, mention what we did. We had a public meeting two weeks ago in this same room. We didn't have anyone coming. We, they had the planning board meeting last week, and there was a misunderstanding with one person that said, he didn't receive the letters to invite them to the community meeting, but then, Lauren, I think she pulled the certified letters, and they had to see that, to clarify the questions that they had, and complaining check backs, and that was it. So, I don't know if you would like me to describe the project, or if you have any particular questions about it.
Does anybody have any questions, Javier?
So you said you had no opposition to it? One person did not receive this thing that they did?
They didn't come to the meeting. Did they, were they, or did they come to the meeting? Yes, one person said they didn't receive the letter, but the certified mail and the little ticket, we could see that you were there. I think if you have questions, I'll also, that's, we'll clarify.
Any other questions? Thank you. Does anybody else come to speak in favor? Anybody else coming to speak in favor? Or is anybody coming in opposition? Is there anybody coming in opposition? I close the public hearing. Any questions of the board?
This was pretty much the consideration.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I made a motion to approve with the commissioner, saying it would be in two years from the date.
Did you get that, chief?
I hear something.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The next thing is the request that's been made by Dr. James Daniel Royster's daughter, Kathy Royster Crismon, to change the name of North McKinley, or McKinley Street to Royster The letters were mailed out to the four property owners that's on McKinley. Have you heard anything back? Is there any comments from the board as to how they feel about this?
Well, my thing is, if they objected, the ones that, they have had letters, the letters were sent out, and you heard nothing from them, then to me, that speaks to yes, they don't mind it. So I think we need to go on with that.
Any other comment? I'll entertain a motion.
Were they just letters, or, and I don't know if it's required, but were they just letters, or was there an open hearing going to be a, send that, then to a meeting about the spike of the building?
No, he mailed certified letters, I think.
They were invited to come to this meeting if they wanted to get comments or order in.
I mean, did you say that, 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 or what?
There's two, and then the Crismons, and then one that's being built.
I think it might have been five property owners, so.
When was the last time they regained or changed the street?
No, I don't remember doing it.
I just know there's gonna be a whole lot of headaches for all these people. I mean, they've been contacted at times, there's a whole lot of headaches in changing someone's personal address, name, mail, everything.
When did you mail the letters out?
August 28th.
Do we know if the last time was 28th? Nope. Thank you. Anybody?
When you, that number.
I just know she wrote, she made a request to all the commissioners and to me, and I mapped out one. What's the wishes? You wanna, you wanna go ahead, or you wanna wait till the next meeting to give them more time to respond?
So there's a letter, they just invited me here, but not actually, they didn't have to respond, it's in conference, and like?
They're informed that the request had been received, they're told it would be considered at this meeting, and that they should mail, or mail comments or something to present their, their being on.
Any negative or any issues for the town? Is there a problem with law?
From the standpoint of the town to re-identify addresses with the county, and then retain, just to update signs for the roads, those are the steps that we would take procedurally on the inside. I think that the complications might be on the recipient's side more than on our side.
The post-alterns, you know, you have to be involved.
The non-111 process, does the non-111 process have to kick in too? Do you have to?
Update PSAs.
Do we have any experience with doing any of that?
I've never done it in my 16 years, so I'm sorry, I don't know.
Are there, are there any other options that we might be able to benefit Dr. Royster in any upcoming new streets, or anything like that, rather than changing current answers? My biggest fear is, nothing against North McKinley's request, this could literally open up a can. We don't know if this has ever been done before, and if we do it for one person, then, I mean, I won't trust, I mean, I mean, that could.
My first instinct is we should wait a little more, but we're not, we're not sure we should, I mean, and I, I don't see a problem with it, with five people that it affects, or whatever, I say they're for it, but I don't make sure, I don't make sure, right now, by the way, I would be.
Well, then you'd understand too, that what's gonna impact them. They might not, they might not know that.
I probably should, again, and if I, if y'all do vote on this, and I, I don't know that I'm, that I, I may have to be recused from this voting, but three of those properties are in, in the HOA name, or covered by an HOA that my firm represents, and I'm in this HOA of those houses, and, and so I don't know that I need to vote on that as well. I'm gonna be there if I can hear my, I mean, I don't know if I've got any.
Sounds like we don't really know what we wanna do, so let's, let's table it and bring it up next meeting, and give the clerk a chance to.
Can you?
Get a little better feel for what.
You asked me to send out certified letters.
I already did send out those, I was.
Yeah, but we're tabling it for another meeting now.
So you, you're asking me to send them, send them up?
No, you don't have to send them, they're.
If it helps the town, I have an HOA's meeting scheduled for October, I mean, they're more than welcome to come, Mr. Royster more than welcome to come and present it to those three property owners that takes care of the yard, I don't know if that'll help or not.
That wouldn't help.
As we were discussing, that one option that you may have is a signed statement from each of the property owners that they agreed to have it done, and then if you have 100% unanimous signatures, then it eliminates your question, either in favor or in opposition of, and that way you'll know if it's 5-0 or 4-0.
I like, I mean, I like the consideration of any new streets or something that's not given names to, and it's kind of going, you do stand a chance, I think, with the, with the, with the, with the, Max and Holly Brown.
We're renaming Will Marcus, McLeod.
And then you have more things, because when you did it for him, or you did it for her.
This, this, I know, this is probably a state thing, but if the town had any kind of adoption policy with the street, if she can adopt the street, kind of like NC DOT does, and then you get a sign in memory of, or in honor of, anything like, do we have any options like that for the town?
Yeah, because they have one locked down, Chicksy Road.
We've got a motion to table it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Road closure request.
Yes, sir, this is your standard protocol to celebrate Halloween, so our request is Southwest Southeast Railroad Streets on October 31st for the trunk retreat, which was requested by staff. You can see the dates and times there listed, and then on East Parish Drive for November 3rd, that would be for our Veterans Day Parade, so these are just the road, road closure requests that would come before you, that would be for the month of October, November
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I made the motion that will approve.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Main Street, you chose.
Yes, sir. This one's a rather difficult conversation topic, because information's moving around very swiftly, but as you know, we had an emergency repair that occurred on Main Street that took us nearly two weeks to get through, and that was in our sanitary sewer system, and we were fortunate to be able to utilize our $875,000 NC-16 grant to make those repairs. And as we were discussing as a staff, the conversation of the downtown Main Street utilities came to the forefront of our conversation. So we reached out to the Wooten Company, which is our standby engineer, to give us an estimate of what it would be to replace the water lines and sewer lines in basic underground utilities on Main Street. The purpose behind that is, as you know, NC DOT stopped its 2018 paving of 301, and at first, we were all trying to kick the can to try to get DOT to pave more Main Street, but I think there may be a blessing or a gift in that, that we were able to unwrap, because had they paved Main Street, we'd have been cutting right into Main Street to try to fix that sanitary sewer repair at the corner of Elm and Main. When we got into that major repair, which is over $25,000, it brought to light the age and infrastructure. So what I want to report to you tonight is from Brian Johnson, the principal at the Wooten Company, that the general age of the water maps on Main Street date back beyond 1961, thus putting the age of the system at greater than 60 years of age. And from Elm Street to I-95, that includes about 1,500 foot of 6-inch water line, a project that we had planned to replace in 2014, but it was not constructed due cost overrun. So a majority of that new water line is shown to be located under sidewalk on South Main, with a little updating of the drawings, can go into construction within 30 days. The cost of that project is approximately $375,000. 301 Elm Street is an additional 1,200 foot of 6-inch line, cost to replace that would be approximately $350,000. And within that section of roadway, there's over 1,900 foot of 8-inch sewer main that runs along Main Street. A portion of that is in good condition, a portion of that can be replaced up to 900 feet. Design and permitting would take a minimum of three months, with an estimated cost of $275,000 or slightly more. In summary, we could repair those underground utilities, and this is the round figure that you'll want to remember, is for a million dollars. But here's what our theory is from public work directors, Robin's position and mine. You're gonna get a 15- to 20-year life cycle out of that new asphalt that's coming in that DOT is gonna pay to pave in 2019. We should seriously consider repairing 100% of our underground infrastructure, primarily from US 301 on Main Street all the way through I-95, because when I-95 is widened, we're already working on the improvements of those lines that run under the interstate. So to be very proactive, if this board chooses to do so, we would pursue whichever manner we could to fast-track the repairs of those underground utilities, so that the four Benson residents and business owners are only having to deal with it one time. Now I am gonna preface, this is gonna be a dusty nine-month period, six to nine months of construction, but I think over time, that the repairs that you would do on Main would gain a substantial amount of life, and would also keep you from having to cut back in, hopefully, to that asphalt if you repair the water and sewer lines that are running over there. So what I'm gonna ask for tonight is your consideration to get your firm numbers, get your estimates, and determine if we can get anything to pull the trigger on this by the October meeting, because it would take us October, November, and December to permit, and start construction in January if we can afford the project, and work to have it completed by July 1st, so that when DOT comes through here to pave, that all your underground work is complete. So I can, I know it's a lot of information, but it's roughly a million dollars, of which right now, $275,000 to $300,000 of the already granted to you. But those are immediate repairs from that NC-16 grant, so right now, you've got a 30% minimum grant, and we could potentially try to leverage some additional, either long-term financing, or a combination of long-term financing with our current fund balance reserve that we have in the water sewer fund, to try to pull the project off. But as we deal with water and sewer repairs, DOT has already gone to storm water, we need to get under and do our responsibilities as well, and I think that would be a strong fiduciary move of the board.
Are the board utilities, certainly, behind 301 and Elm and Main Street?
There are certain sections that water runs in the alleyways, and certain sections that runs on Main. When you're asking, are there any other utilities, we've already upgraded the electric that's gone underground, it's due to the decorative lights, and nothing else would be our responsibility at that point, because DOT handles storm water, and if there's any other utilities that run through that area, I don't know, this would be a perfect time to do a combo and trench for pulling fiber optics, if there was anything else we could leverage into that, on a tiered trench, but our responsibility would be water. And I think natural gas has been upgraded in the alleyways, there's some work going on in there.
There's not going back this way. That's really trash.
The current utilities that are in those alleys, do we talk about moving those ones to Main Street?
No, sir. No, no, what we're talking about is the lines that are currently in Main, having to do those repairs. Whenever possible, we'd like to get those water and sewer lines out of that Main Street run. Obviously, DOT prohibited us to do those water line repairs on the section between 301 headed at 5027. We had to move all that, and if y'all recall, we were potholing, which meant we would dig a hole, dig a hole, and then we were boring to try to maintain the trees on Main Street and sidewalks. So there's different techniques we can utilize, but right now, we're looking at plus or minus rate of the million-dollar project, with upwards of 30% of that, or at least 27 and a half of it, already in the hand, you already have granted, then we would continue to do other sewer work, but what we're asking for is the provision to come back with a more detailed report, and an opportunity to pull that trigger as early as October.
Now, the water lines and sewer lines in alleyways, do they get replaced?
The sewer lines in the alleyways and water lines, we're working on maintaining easements for, because we don't have easements there. On Main Street, we can do that work a little bit easier, because we already have the right of will. We have plans with in-house funds to change water lines in those alleyways, we're still working on easement procurement. And then once we come through and make major repairs within the alleyways, our goal is to come back and resurface asphalt whenever those underground work, projects are completed.
So what's your proposal is, to give you the go-ahead to, to get quotes, to see what it's gonna cost to do that whole thing, is that what you're looking for?
Sir, not a quote, but to refine your numbers, get an engineer's estimate, and be prepared to give you a presentation in October that I would ask that, if I have to work individually, or one-on-two, and two-on-one, to get you up the speed, we wouldn't need to make a decision, I believe, in October at the latest, to be able to get it complete by June, July. If we go beyond October, we won't be able to complete the project. We would be running right into the paving.
You have any questions for Matt?
If, if we can do it, can we afford it, and can we get through the permit process? We'll do our very best to get you those answers, with all things coming at us in the next 30 days.
Well, I entertain a motion to give Matt the authority to go ahead and put together the information.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Okay, Matt again.
Thank you, Mayor. We are pleased that Brastin Newton has elevated and taken his new position at the county that that left us vulnerable with our backup delegate to Electricity. Traditionally, it's been a staff appointment and in my absence at the McKempel Board meetings or in a rate committee meeting, we need to have a certified designated auxiliary alternate on standby. And with Ms. Kim Pickett's experience in utilities and finance, I would recommend that we consider making Ms. Kim, Ms. Pickett our designated alternate within the McKempel Board.
Any discussion? Entertain a motion.
I'm making the motion. The one she scored.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. July financials, Kim Pickett.
All right. As we are coming into the first month of the new year, July, we're supposed to be at eight point thirty-three percent. Our revenues are low as usual for the first month. It's seven point one eight percent. We usually start seeing those increase around the month of November, December and January due to tax revenues. And our expenditures are at ten point seven eight percent, which is also pretty normal because we pay all our yearly dues in the beginning of July. And we've, we're trying, we've got a few months where we didn't buy anything hopefully. And so we're having to replenish some of our supplies in the month of July. So that's what we've seen. If you have any questions.
When you get all the accounts balanced out, is there going to be some surplus that's going to go into this year or last year?
Oh, yes, yes. There is, there is some surplus. I had auditors here last week, actually. Everything seemed to go really well. They're still doing everything that they do. So I don't have any like numbers back. I don't even have preliminary numbers back from them yet. But there was, there does appear to be some surplus from last year, so.
So you're low on revenue and high on expenditure.
That is very typical for July, though.
Any questions to Kim? Entertain a motion approved.
I made that motion that will approve it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Consider budget amendment two, Kim.
Okay. So this is, as you all know, there was damage to the parts and wrecked buildings. It has now been fixed, but this is revenue that came in from the insurance proceeds. So this is adjusting their budget to increase that, their recreation department and increase their building maintenance and repair of buildings and grounds. So this check has been received. It is in the budget.
Entertain a motion approved.
I'm moving.
All in favor say aye. Close, no. Budget amendment three.
This budget amendment is for the work that was approved last month at our board meeting. This is from, this money is allocated out of fund balance. It was surplus that we had last year in the water sewer fund duty not having to make a payment into our pump station project. So you got, the work was approved in the last board meeting. This is just during the paperwork from our budget.
Any questions to Kim? Entertain a motion approved.
I made a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to speak to you about is the opportunity to expend our grant dollars that we received from Johnson County Visitors Bureau matched with our two percent local bed tax to begin purchasing our outdoor wireless speaker system that we'd applied for. We just wanted the board's blessing to go ahead and spend those funds before we do so.
I'm making that motion.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Paul Allen. Cover the one and two while you're up there.
One and two.
Go I, J, K and Allen. Get them all.
Yeah, I, J, one and two.
Okay, on the number one, we're going to, we want to replace the generator that's currently at Chickpea lift station. Right now, we've got a nineteen eighty-seven model military surplus unit. That's very, it's getting worse unreliable. So what we want to do is go ahead and upgrade that generator. The price came from Gregory Poole, that state contract owned that. And the number two would be purchasing three fifteen horsepower aerators to go back into the flood.
Good. It says here FEMA's rebound.
We. We had, we had a few questions about that. And one of them was, we weren't sure if we could get the other two quotes in in time for the aerator. So with FEMA, it's like for like with the USDA project is three quotes. So we were able to get the last three quotes in on the aerators to get them in here. And we had to get clarification on if we could use state bid on a USDA project. And they were, they said that was found in.
From very simple terms, we had three funding sources. We're trying to leverage the funding sources that extends our dollars further. Simply put, we have a massive amount of work to do. And so whenever we can attribute, financially attribute a project or an item to a particular funding source legitimate and extend our dollars out of FEMA, that's what we do.
Now, I got a question as far as concerning FEMA. Mayor was certainly correct. Last year, when we were talking about FEMA deadlines after, after this year. Is that correct?
There's different deadlines for different portions of the project. And on FEMA, we were meeting with them, we extended what's considered a cap scenario. So it was nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars at the wastewater treatment plant. And I'll have to verify what our deadline is there. But yes, sir, we're creeping up on Golden Leaf deadlines for the Golden Leaf Fund and we're creeping up on deadlines with FEMA's eighteen month execution.
How much are those three aerators?
The three aerators all total are, is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighteen cents. That's rate included and some bolted parts that's going to have to be added to them at the fact.
Let's take the Gregory Poole one, number one first. Forty, forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-one cents to replace the pump state of the generator. Entertain a motion for that.
I made a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the second one is the three aerators is twenty-eight thousand plus.
Make my motion.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. The rotor repair bid.
Yes, so we've got a, one of the cage rotors out in the plant that puts oxygen into the water. The, on one side of it where the bearing sits to hold the shaft up, the concrete that it's supposed to be bolted down to has separated itself from the wall. We put this out for bids. You can see the bids. Charles Underwood came in with the most, best responsive bid at four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's who we recommend going with.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
I made that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Clarifier repair.
Oh, we've got two clarifiers that are needing immediate repair. And while we basically have extra funds, we're going to go ahead and get all four of them done at one time. We put this out for bid also, EOD Incorporated had the lowest responsive bid at twenty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. And that's who we're recommending to go with.
Is that for all four?
All four of them.
Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion.
I made a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Uh, the rotor valve repair.
Oh, yes, sir. This is, it's in the filter building. It's a drain valve that, it leaks by so bad that we just about can't use it. Charles Underwood was the lowest responsive bidder at twenty thousand, two seventy-five. And that is our recommendation who we need to go with.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
I made that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no.
Thank.
Vault restored.
Town manager's report.
Mayor, we went through an exhaustive process to try to limit a date down for the NC DOT's I ninety-five public input meeting. And we were able to utilize Crossroads Church's building at this point because we know that the meeting may be well attended. And Crossroads is finalizing to make sure this is okay, that none of this date, date will change. But we do believe that a meeting with the board and staff would occur between four and five PM on Thursday, October eleventh. And that a drop-in session for the public would occur between five and seven. Want to let you know that's also the same night as the next sundown in downtown. So the sundown in downtown will be kicking off around seven PM. But I believe that it gives us sufficient time to get there and get public input. If you have no objections to that.
Why did you schedule it the same time?
I didn't schedule it the same night. We had even conferred with Ms. Loretta Byrd. And these, there was only multiple dates, handful of dates available from DOT. And Ms. Loretta, we green lighted it and then we both went back and realized we had double booked it. So we had already launched the missile with DOT. We just want to spend from four to nine o'clock with the entire board is really why we double booked it. So if you don't have any objections, Crossroads will check their calendar. We believe that we can get in there and do some good work about the I ninety-five winding. We didn't want to push it off much too late.
Does anyone have any objection to that?
Ms. Loretta and I had mule days on the brain. We were solely focused on mule days.
You go ahead and make, or make your.
Is it okay with the board? Everything else you can see listed down keeps us extremely active, not just today with the anticipated storms for the weekend rolling into mule day two thousand and eighteen to celebrate our sixty-ninth annual celebration. But we also have a public power recruitment day slated on September twenty-ninth at the Lot Motorsports Park. The purpose of that event is to find future linemen, line women, policemen, policewomen, things of that nature for public service. And we are partnering with Electricity's in North Carolina, the other three public power towns in Johnson County, as well as Capitol Area Workforce Development and NC Works are all slated to be with us on the twenty-ninth in an attempt to recruit people for our line worker career development program. That rolls right into public power week, followed by fire prevention week, your board of commissioners meeting on the ninth, the Optimist Reverse Raffle for Parks and Recreation to continue to raise funds locally on the twelfth of October. Another movie night, which is our black and orange egg hunt, which is extremely successful and very well attended. Rolls into Healthy Harvest where we have shifted the focus of Healthy Harvest on the run portion to be a run for the vets, the proceeds from that portion of the race and the vendor donations will go to disabled American veterans. And the car show traditionally held by the Full Throttle Car Club that will go to the Vietnam veterans. Our goal is to raise those monies on the twenty-seventh. Then we have our Halloween trick or treat and our Halloween trunk retreat on Railroad Street. And then we come right into November and we would like to donate any of the proceeds that we collect on the twenty-seventh of October to our veterans at a ceremony on our Veterans Day celebration, which occurs this year on November the third. So we are literally hands down, working straight, non-stop, beginning tomorrow morning through tonight, tomorrow morning, all the way through the third of November. In addition, you see mule days, the sip and shop on October fifth and sundown in downtown are all part of the Chambers sponsored function that just like to round us out as we gear up into the shopping season and tail end to Christmas on Main. So we'll come up for air, I think, on the twenty-sixth of December. But if you have any questions, please, we'll be happy. And I think one of our excuses for double booking is there wasn't a date left in two thousand and eighteen that we couldn't step on somebody else's toes. Also want to let you know that I believe, which is it the elementary or middle school has a function slated or stacked on top of it? Elementary school has an event on the twenty-seventh of October as well. So we're just a vibrant, glowing and growing community. Unfortunately, everything's happening in the fourth quarter, third, fourth quarter of two thousand and eighteen.
I just want to clarify one thing. Parks and Recreation can put on fundraiser. So this, this, this sentence should have read, South Johnson Optimist Club Reverse Raffle slash Parks and Rec. And everybody that hadn't bought a ticket, I want you to know that five thousand dollars for the money that's raised in that, if we sell all the tickets, will go towards the project out on Lee Street. So if you don't have a ticket, please get one from me. And through this, we've raised, when we get through this year, we will have raised thirty-six thousand dollars for the field house project. Any questions about what Matt talked about? You anything, attorney? Board of Commissioners.
I do. I, I like to say that I did attend the conference in Asheville. Was very, very impressed. It was a very good conference. I was especially impressed with some things that towns that are trying to get in place that we already have. I was extremely impressed with that. They were interested in the media. They talked about the lineman, linesman program. They're trying to implement all those things. But we are fortunate that we already have them in place. So for that, I was very proud, glad to be a citizen of Nashville at that time because we were shining through that night. So I was very impressed with the, with the meet, very impressed. Mr. Zapp, thinking on top of things, and I really appreciate what he did.
Matt?
Anything? I don't think any.
I got, I want to say thank you to the town staff, everybody for what you've done so far preparing for this storm and everything that you're going through the whole weekend. It's a big thanks in advance. Another thing that we need to be thinking about or coming around to having a discussion about with the Parks and Rec, with them receiving that grant, this board needs to probably just start having some real discussions about tearing down the buildings right there.
About what?
Tearing down the buildings right there.
Well, that's, that's different than the part out.
I know. I'm saying because they got it for it.
Oh, okay.
We probably need to answer.
Because I just, I will tell you that there was a question raised. I don't know how the word he got into the presentation, but that was the one question they asked about our report when they, it came on the agenda is, are we going to pay money to tear down buildings? And of course, our representative stood up and said, no, that, that's not part of it. The timer. Where did the dog stand?
You know, to be honest with you, I've only seen one. I've seen one. And that was actually the death. So.
They'll wash away the cooking. They'll wash away the thing.
Well, maybe that one washed away, but I haven't seen anybody in my.
Anything else, Commissioners? I don't have anything. We got out a lot faster than I thought we were. Anything else, anybody? I'll entertain a motion or adjourn.
I made that motion.
We, oh, adjourn.